Our first item, I'm sorry, our first item of business is the public hearing, application of Wayne and Patricia Frazier, 22 Gurley Road, East Lime, Connecticut, applicant owner. Application for a one lot re-subdivision of approximately three acres, zoned R-10 at 22 Gurley Road, East Lime, assessors map 37, Lot 20. And waiver request from Sections 4-2-3B, Section 4-2-3J, and Section 6-8 of the East Lime subdivision regulations. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this public hearing?
Can I just ask what the waivers mean, what they like waiving?
Sure, if you come up and state your name and...
Good evening, my name's Al Asterowitz, and I just would like to know what's being waived. I don't understand the sections I've received in the mail. So I just want to know what the repercussions are, what the waivers are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll direct that question to Mr. Geisell, our town planner.
So waiver from Section 4-2-3B, requirement to provide archaeological survey. Waiver from Section 4-2-3J, that's a waiver from the requirement providing open space. And Section 6-8 with a waiver from stormwater management, a section for, that pertains to stormwater management. Subdivisions of three lots or less are eligible to request a waiver, so long as they can demonstrate that there will be no downstream flooding. But if that clarifies specifically, for the applicants, we'll inform to that to the public.
All right, just as a point of order, Gary, do you have a microphone? Are you, are we getting your sound?
Yeah.
Is that on the recording?
Yes, I guess.
But if you're seated, did we just pick up what you just said?
You may have.
May have, all right. We don't have a dedicated microphone for you?
Uh, no.
Okay. We'll put that on the list. So are we to hear a presentation from the applicant?
All right, I'm J. Robert Fanner. I'm an engineering surveyor in business in this town for, it's terrible to tell you, in excess of 41 years. We, we're doing this to Wayne Frazier, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. I first subdivided this land for Wayne in, in 1979 into the three acre piece he's currently right now. He's, he's lived here in excess of 40 some odd years. It's, it's three acres. And we're subdividing it into currently two parcels. The parcel on the left is Wayne's house, and the parcel on the right will be his daughter's As you can tell by the size of this piece, we probably could've got four pieces, but that's not what Wayne wanted to do. The property, if nobody's been there, the property is all cleared, mostly all lawn with a few trees. The soil is great, and, you know, for what we're getting nowadays, that's, that's pretty And I'll, I'll ask any questions that the commission may have.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on, it said the, well, what you said was the house on the, I assume you're looking at the same thing I am. The existing house on the left is Wayne's house.
Right.
And then you said the house on the right is...
The house, the proposed house on the right.
Okay, on the far right.
On the far right.
Well, okay, and, but the middle parcel you didn't talk about says existing three-bedroom house, right? Is there, are there not three parcels here?
This is the existing three-bedroom house right here. Pre-let?
Yeah, well, what is this?
And this is the proposed house.
Yeah, okay, but if you go to the far left, what's that right there?
That, well, cousin's house.
Okay, but we're not talking about that.
No, 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 no.
We're just talking about these two right here.
That's where I cut off in 1979.
Okay, you know what, these aren't colored.
This is based, the driveway has color, right?
Yeah, just the color, okay, I don't have that.
That's okay.
Okay, that's cool. All right, so that's what he's trying to do, is just take, subdivide to get this.
Correct. Yeah, he wants his daughter out of the house with her four kids.
How pleasant.
Not going far.
Any other questions? Again, it's pretty simple. It's all family. You know, I've done many, many subdivisions in this town over the years, but this is relatively simple. Soil's great. If I answer your questions about waivers, for a big subdivision, I mean, it's an architectural plan, I want to see if there's anything architecturally important about the land Wayne's owner for ages. Drainage, there's no drainage problem here. The, the land isn't actually going to change except for the house. I haven't reported to the town engineer that agrees with me.
Wherever the entrance to the property may, where we may access the house, wherever the entrance is.
Oh, I have, I'll show you. Wait. The access is right here, on the side of the property.
Okay, so does that mean they're going to come down the side of the property next to Wayne's house?
Right, right where the driveway is now.
Okay.
Sir.
Not in Cecil's plot. Does that answer your questions?
It does. Do they have an exact location for the house already chosen?
Uh, yeah, give or take, you know. She might want to turn it a little bit to get a better view or whatever, but yeah, it's generally up to them.
Well, we, they can only build one, so he wants to see the water.
Yeah, yeah, if he doesn't want, yes.
Is there a, obviously it's going to change the landscaping somewhat.
Not really.
Is there a, is it not going to change level, elevations, levels, water flows?
The land actually slows very gently that way. It's a little hilly, a little bit of a hill on the left side where there's nothing, I think.
Yeah, not terribly familiar with.
And it's all, it's all lawn.
Hmm, okay.
Let me show you again. Give you a little help. This piece here, all this, all this is lawn.
Mm-hmm.
There's a few trees in here.
So it's not going to change water flow runoff or...
And it's going to have to change that, because it's gently sloping, I don't have to change anything for slope. The driveway could be running on grade, and it's going to be a stone driveway. That house fits right in. There's only a three, three foot difference in grade between the front and back of the house, so it's all...
Okay, thanks.
I have a question regarding archaeological waiver. Typically, if a parcel has activity, it goes to the state archaeologist's desk, where that archaeologist makes the determination whether there is, might be something worth checking out. You've asked for a waiver of that protocol.
Right.
Is it your understanding that there's nothing of value, historically speaking, culturally speaking on the, correct?
Not as far back as I can remember or Wayne can remember, that he's been in there since it was developed.
My specific, my specific point is, I was able, I was on a historic walk on the Gurley Brook area, all about some of the mills that were there.
Down low?
Yes, and all along it, and what I took away from the, from the walk was that, right in this thicket of woods and brush, that you can't see anything, it used to be a big mill, so it's deceptive.
It's down below, with the brook.
So you're familiar with the, that mill?
Uh, yeah, the mill that was right up actually by the road.
Okay.
Don't forget, I've been here 71 years, and, and I surveyed half the town, so I am usually familiar with it.
So you're aware of...
And actually, I can remember the mill on, 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 at against pond when I was a kid.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, and we had some, they had some ponds were flooding again. I surveyed those properties that are right along the brook there, and the mill was right up above it, but it was nothing up this way. I can't go back more than 70 some odd years.
71 years is admirable, but the archaea, state archaeologist...
Yeah, it goes back, goes back further.
Goes a little further back than that.
Yeah. But usually, you know, this is, because I've been doing this for years and years and years, but usually when they put that in, that was for a big subdivision, not something that's in the middle of, of, of developed properties. And it's defined, you know, we have things that you can't see anymore, you know. I would, I would think of, but there was pond, there's things up, up in the hill there that are very nice, that are archaeologically valuable. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's, there's ways, there's places that people haven't been at in 30, 40 years, yes. Not, it's long.
Point, looking at the density of the sub, of the existing subdivision, in that the lot has already been developed, most likely anything that's architected or something you can't, here has already been disturbed or moved in or impacted. My professional opinion.
Very well.
I can tell you too, Cecil Banning, an old surveyor, who would've been probably 120 by now, lived in that house right in the front on the water, and owned that land. House right, right there on, on the water.
Oh, I see.
And we just divided it to three. And he was there, now we go seven, he was there far more than seven years.
But he's not here. He's not here.
Well, you wouldn't only said. Any other questions? Sure.
Do you envision a pump-up septic? It looks like a septic slightly uphill, but it'll be below grade enough to flow down.
Yeah, I have, I had to create that down 10 feet plus, was all gravel, no water.
Contour lines, you know, I get the cold...
So the system can go a little deeper, I can, I can fight the hill without any trouble. You know, and actually, and it's only going to be in the ground maybe a foot and a half, two feet. They have, they have great systems now, instead of the old system, they have great systems, you can go up there and something, you got everything, so it won't even take up, as you can see by the size of the system, they don't take up very much space. That's a system in a reserve area, only, less than 50 feet long.
Mr. Geisell, I would just be looking for a little help here. Where, where in our subdivision regs is the guidelines for the waivers that he's, he's asking for?
In the chapter 4.
Except for stormwater, that, that's one we haven't addressed at all really, and I think we need to at least consider, let the public consider what that involves. What's Section 6-8 though?
4-12, criteria for...
Thank you, Mr. Geisell.
Then, as frankly referring to Section 6, has the specific...
Has the specific, the specific stormwater...
Questionary question.
Right. Well, I just want to read for the record what our regulations say about the waivers. Only as specifically authorized within these regulations, the commission may waive certain requirements by three-quarters vote of all members when it is demonstrated that strict compliance with such regulations will cause exceptional difficulty or undue hardship. You're asking for a waiver, so my question to you is, could you please describe your exceptional difficulty or undue hardship?
For which waiver, for all waivers?
For the stormwater.
For stormwater? We have a letter from the town engineer, don't we?
Yeah, if there is, Exhibit H.
And it's, I'll answer why, not by hardship, I actually took care of it by saying that they can even put in a little rain garden or a little dry well for the, for the only change in surface area that would increase the maximum runoff, which is the house. And then, and we have a letter from the town engineer. So there's no hardship, but I said I could do it. We don't know if we could do it. The hardship, an architectural, an archaeological survey is a hardship, one just having to do it.
Right, but with respect to the stormwater, typically...
Well, you know, if you know stormwater, it's, I said nobody knows it better than me. You have three acres, or just take the one lot, one, one and a half acres of all grass, and, and it's just running, runs to the river, which you want to be, keep clear. You know, you have more damage if you, if you put fertilizer on it than you will with the house. And again, a rain garden can take care of it or a dry well. And that's what I said to, to the engineer.
And to further clarify, was Exhibit H, the memo from Peter Benny to myself regarding the review, and I agree on that, he indicates that residential roof drain runoff is generally considered quote clean and quote source of runoff. Applicant's waiver request indicates that the additional runoff from the proposed house will be treated by a dry well or rain garden. The East Lime Engineering Department has determined that the applicant has met all the exemption requirements as stated in Section 6-8-7, and recommends a exemption from 6-8-1 to 6-8-6 to be presented.
Very well. So we're, what we're doing now is we're conducting the public hearing, so we want to make sure any of the guests tonight, members of the audience who'd like to speak to the record about this application, this is your opportunity to come forward. Is there any further questions or comments from members of the audience tonight?
I have one.
Sure, come on up and just speak into the microphone, please.
I just would like to know where the runoff would be directed?
Water is directed now towards the river.
Okay, so it's going to go down the hill towards the river?
It's likely north now, and I'll show you. All the stormwater goes this way. There's the river.
Okay.
Is the whole house, nothing changes here.
Right.
So I just put a rain garden. The water won't even get to the river.
Sorry, that's my way.
Go ahead, you can come up and speak into the microphone. Just state your name, please, and your address.
Carol Asterowitz, 6 Gurley Road. When you say the river, do you mean the cove? The actual cove?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And so, it's hard to see from the back, the red square, I see Wayne's house, the red square is where the proposed house is?
No, I'm not holding sure.
Right there?
Yeah, this, this, this is the proposed room house.
Okay.
This is Wayne's house.
Yep.
You live in six, you live down here?
No, I live right next door.
In the next door.
I live in the white land right there.
Down the road.
No.
One hour.
No.
We're here.
Right next door.
Yeah.
There's no road there.
No, it's here.
No, I, I...
Gurley Road is here.
Gurley Road is there, yeah.
Wayne's cousin's house went.
Yeah, and look at the name on the white area.
It's Asterowitz.
Asterowitz.
That's where we live.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
And the water, the water goes on this lot, which is, the same as it goes on your lot.
Okay.
Right, but we're, we're concerned if they build a house where the water drains this way.
No, no, no. Absolutely not.
Because right now, if it rains down the hill, there's a road at the bottom of the hill, and then it, then...
There's no road between here and river. It will not drain anywhere but down towards the river. Nothing on this lot, even if I wanted to, nothing on, would regrade this lot to go towards all Cecil's house or your house, this, this way. Well, some of this, you know, some of this water will push over here.
So, going station wise, where is the cove? Is the cove right here?
Yes.
Okay, so how does the water get from that house down the hill into the cove?
It's going up.
There's, at the bottom of the hill, there is, there is a turnaround. It's not a road, but it's a dead...
No, that's not my question now. Because the, how, the property that they're looking at is actually raised, our property goes right down to the water, you can walk right down the water.
Your property is raised.
Your property is raised.
Right.
So that's, that become, that, I think that's really what his question was, is that as the water flows, it's actually raised up quite high off the cove area where the front of their property is, and would it be draining directly down that hill to the property? I mean, to the cove is, is a real good question.
The answer to your question is, the water's going to go right where it went.
I don't know where that is.
Which is, doesn't matter, it's going to go right where it went, and it's not going to be any faster, slower, more intense, or polluted than it is today. And that's all we ever can do is do. And, and in this case, you know, Wayne's is all lawn.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. We're on the other side of that, those trees that you referenced, we're on that with their socks, so that's why we're asking.
The commission, if you look behind you.
But you won't get any, as far as your property is...
No.
No water's going that way. That, that doesn't go that way now.
Okay.
And what, and what is going towards your property will continue to go towards your property with no increased runoff.
Okay.
That I can guarantee.
Gary, what could you, um...
On, on that point, and Gary, we'll get to your point in a minute, but I just want to state for the members of the public there, the neighbors, we're in Chapter 4-12 on waivers, and I had quoted earlier that it needs to be demonstrated that strict compliance with our regulations will cause exceptional difficulty or undue hardship to the, to the owner. Additionally, the regulation goes on to state various points that must be met by the applicant. And point four is the granting of the waiver will not have a significantly adverse effect upon adjacent property, the environment, or the public health and safety. So that's definitely something the commission's going to be thinking about, and should you discover anything that is relevant, that you want this commission to know about, you can come back to us, because we are, well...
We have 35 days to conduct the public hearing. I have rest for, for the next...
It is on the agenda tonight, and...
Do you have one other reason between now and the October?
I would say, you know, in my 40 some odd years practicing, there is no, and I, and I repeat, no increasing runoff on a site when it's developed and when it's not developed. Because when you figure increase in runoff, you figure how the property is now, how it's going to be, what disturbances you have, and it's so minute, you really can't calculate it. But you, you could say, okay, it's going to increase a teeny bit because of the house, only because of the house, not because of the driveway, not because of anything, I think, it's just because of the house. So the answer to your question, in my professional opinion, is, it's not going to be any runoff. We're not changing grades, and there's nothing even to put on a piece of paper, but, I mean, that's simple engineering logic. And as far as the river, we're, we're down low, and I know it's the slope of the land, and, and the slope of the land is not changing, so that wouldn't affect it either.
If I can ask you, if you were, if you were to not request this waiver and you were to meet the regulations for stormwater...
Well, I do meet the regulations, I think.
What do you do, you don't?
Yeah.
Do you understand what I said, though?
No, no.
No.
To me, you're asking for a waiver because in, what we typically hear is that in order to meet the regulations, your, the site would need to be altered, there'd have to be improvements done to capture the water and meet our regulations.
It doesn't need anything altered to meet your regulations.
So why do we even need a waiver?
Well, maybe you don't. I'd rather ask for one and say, okay, you don't need to regular, that waiver, you conform without it, than come in and not ask for it and just, whatever. Do you understand?
I do.
Okay, then, then I'll, I'll repeat what I said. It's simple, doesn't change, the slope of the land doesn't change, I'm just, as you can see, it's, it's a one and a half acre piece, it's less than 1% of the, of the land mass of building a house. I, I said the way we would probably do it is either a rain garden, and I'm not a believer in rain gardens, but, or a, a dry well, because it's all sandy stuff, will, will take care of any increase because of the roof of the house.
Okay.
And I think that meets your regulation, and if it doesn't, that's why I ask for it.
Very well.
Okay, any other questions on that?
I have one, maybe, from Mr. Geisell.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just touching this here, because I hope everybody can see. This is the existing driveway with a turnaround, I guess we share with a neighbor, kind of driveway that goes to the existing house. And it looks like it's going to move the access to the road over to this point, is that correct?
Well, and the group is going to use the same driveway.
But they didn't, they...
Well, we have to have an easement over...
And so, I see on the, on the plan there is a right of way to Lot 1. Is there a buffer encroachment issue for the rest of the road to go with this next lot that we're overlooking, or am I... This is where, the right of way should be on, I see if there's a right of way to Lot 1, but I don't see, I have a patient that says there's another right of way that, that is this close encroachment. I always have, a, a, a home building that I always have a concern about is over, on where it's going to go, but, but on that lot, it's, well, you're going to have a close neighbor of a driveway there that I wonder if we're, are we observing setbacks on that driveway extension?
I believe, in terms of the zoning setbacks, requirements for driveways, they've seen common crews from a hall that would indicate that they might be needing zoning regulations. The existing driveway, approximately 10, 10 feet from the property line. The proposed driveway, I guess, which is being shown, they're going to use the existing driveway and break that house and continue on. There may be something the commission would want to see revised on plan, if that is the driveway goes.
Well, I think it's there, it's on the plan.
Well, it shows the proposed driveway, if you look at the proposed driveway, you're at, you know, almost two feet to the property line. So, if they're going to use the existing driveway in addition to the proposed driveway, would you revise that to use the right?
Use what?
Let me, let me just say, there is nothing in the subdivision regulations or in the zoning thing about a driveway not being exposed to the property line. And, and, and in actuality, we're going to use the driveway that's there, right, which goes right down alongside the house, and then we're going to go behind the house and start over again. Again, we had to have an easement to conform, and I just put the driveway down the middle of the easement. It's a 25-foot easement with a 12-foot driveway.
So it leaves six feet on either side for a snowshoe?
Okay, I understand. I was misinterpreting the Lot 1 versus Lot 2 with, with the neighbor there. I just seem to recall other waivers on this driveway location, so I'll offer that to Mr. Geisell in case it needs to be looked up further.
Yeah, but again, we're going to, we're going to come down existing driveway, nothing's going to change until right alongside the house, and then it's going to shoot into the property.
And what, what's the, is that a paved driveway that you're proposing?
No, 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 it's stone. It's, it's stone now, stone, the drive, the current driveway is stone, the proposed driveway will be stone.
All right, does any of the commission members have further questions or comments?
No.
Going one last time to the audience, does anybody else want to speak during the public hearing?
I just have one comment.
Sure, come on up. Sure, come on up.
And, and, you know, disrespect to the engineer, because I'm also an engineer, but my concern is over the stormwater drain, if we meet regulations, I don't understand why we need a waiver, I think we should just go through the processes, my comment, you know, I'm concerned about where the water will drain, I have a different opinion.
I'm, I'm not through the process.
Well, then, why do we need a waiver? That's my, that's my comment.
Thank you. We have an option to close the public hearing or continue it, I wanna remind the commission that, uh, in similar cases, we've done site walks to try to familiarize ourselves with, uh, exactly what's going on the ground, we are looking at two-dimensional drawings here, which don't, uh, uh, realistically depict the s- the topography and what, what water might actually do. Personally, I don't, I didn't hear anything tonight that made me think we need to do the site walk.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I would be, uh, I'd recommend that we continue the public hearing and, uh, uh, see what comes out over the next two weeks, and if nothing new comes, we shut it down in two weeks. Uh, could I get a motion to continue the public hearing?
I, just, uh, with one other thought, the, uh, the state archaeologist, the burden associated with that would be time, not money at all, right? That's a, that's a service that the.
That's a very good point there.
State bears on the, on the back of the taxpayer, right?
Correct, and i- in, uh, a recent hearing, we, uh, the president of the Historical Society was present one night, and he was, he weighed in for us on what he thought the, uh, archaeological merit might be or might not be. Uh, we don't have that tonight, so, um, yes, I, I hear your point, and I don't think it would, uh, encumber the applicant to ask that it get bounced up to the desk of the archaeologist.
We've, we've had other applications in the past where you have, you can ask for some, you said the planning's dead, the other is, uh, so, yeah, so.
Very well. Okay, uh, I heard a motion from, uh, Rita to continue, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Ernie was louder, but Joan was closer, so.
Deal.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time. Uh, this public hearing has been continued, we're now gonna move down our agenda to the regular meeting agenda. Please sign plan, commission, we can take a moment to discuss these. Thank you for the full size. Normally, we have to squint, looking at the reduced. Our first order of business in the regular meeting is public delegations, this is time set aside for the public to address the commission on a subject matter, not on the agenda. Issues or concerns related to approved subdivisions under construction, and in-house proposals or general, general topics of discussion are open to comment. I recognize everyone in the room, so we're gonna move on to the approval of minutes. The alternates and the ex officio. Yep. Uh, in your member packets, the minutes of the August fourth. Public hearing and regular meeting minutes. As a review, if you were not present at the meeting, uh, the correct, uh, vote is to abstain unless you have familiarized yourself with the record, in which case, you can vote. Do I hear a motion to approve the August fourth public hearing?
And make a motion to approve the minutes of the August fourth meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion from Rita.
Second.
Second from Ernie. Flipping through, does anyone see anything in the public hearing that needs amending? Very well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Abstain, not present, although I have a view.
Okay, five zero. Zero. Five zero one. Uh, minutes of the August fourth regular meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? Joan, do I hear second?
Second.
Second from Fran. Any adjustments to the August four regular meeting minutes? Oh, I do have a comment there. I, under ex officio, Roseanne Hardy, under reports in the minutes, uh, this is a good record of some of the dialogue, I wanted to add, uh, at the end, um, I had made a statement that the planning commission typically, uh, acts to protect our community character, and the completion of the boardwalk would constitute a, a significant change in our community.